Any others? Members of the council, I declare a conflict on cheque numbers 309942 and 310375 in which I have an interest. And also, I'm declaring a conflict, even though I have no financial interest, it's in the Ribfest, the conflict we've got to discuss this evening, in the Ruby Club of Niagara Falls Sunrise. We have a number of deputations this evening, members of council, and the first one is a very pleasant task. We have with us a high school student, Becky Putticombe. Becky, Andy. Becky, please come forward, if you would, to the podium. Welcome. Members of council, Becky is a seventeen-year-old student at Wesleyan Secondary School. She was chosen by her teacher to be the representative in the CBC's Canada's Seven Wonders Contest. Becky and I had a chance to chat this morning on the CBC radio programme, Sounds Like Canada. And Becky, it gives me great pleasure to welcome you, your parents Mike and Karen, welcome, and members of your family, along with the Vice Principal at Wesleyan, Kieran Gittens, and your teacher, Marita Busma. Welcome to all. Becky, you're here this evening, of course, by invitation of the members of council, for a special presentation. We, along with the residents of Niagara Falls, are proud of your efforts to promote Niagara Falls in CBC's Seven Wonders of Canada Contest. The contest has taken life of its own, and last meeting, councillor Diodati moved that our IT department put a link to the voting site right on our own city of Niagara Falls website. And I'm pleased that this has started more than two-hundred-and-fifty-five additional nominations for our city, just in the week since the last council meeting. And also, since that time, I believe we had over twenty-four thousand hits on our city website. Your work has been keen, and of course, in promoting our city in this contest. You have now had several radio opportunities to discuss the highlights of Niagara Falls, as well as television appearances, of course, and much acknowledgement in our local newspapers, as we have seen. We appreciate your spirited words, your recognition of the natural beauty of the falls themselves, and the attractions that help bring twelve million visitors to Niagara Falls every year. And you have been a strong voice in the promotion and endorsement of our city, and you have made our residents very, very proud. It is always invigorating to hear in the words of the youth what their city means to them. And in Becky's words, I believe we can be confident that Niagara Falls will be represented well in the voting stage of the wonders contest. In fact, as we noted, tomorrow, after an extended nomination period, I'm told that the list of final nominees will be announced, and the actual voting for the seven wonders is set to begin. And Becky, I'd like to invite you at this time to say a few words to motivate the citizens and residents of our city, along with visitors, to vote for our city. So, welcome.
Thank you. Niagara Falls is just such a wonderful place to live, and for people to come as tourists. And I just really believe that we need to come together as a city and all vote for Niagara Falls as one of the seven wonders. We need to get on our computers and start nominating tomorrow. We need to send as many votes as we can. Vote often, and I just really want to see us become one of the seven wonders, because we deserve it.
Becky, before you run away, I just want to add to, in consultation with staff, first of all, we're all very proud of what you've done, in drawing us into the forefront of the talk right now in the country. Your staff have done a great job at posting this on the city website. So, what we're doing now, and as you know, we get millions of visitors to our website, and we're encouraging staff, and we're going to try to start an internal promotion to help get more people to vote for us. We've gotten all extra nominations, now the key is the vote. We're hoping that we're going to be shortlisted for that vote tomorrow. The key is going to be to get everyone behind what you've already started, which we're very proud of. Starting tomorrow morning, I understand that you will go to go to the city's website, niagarafalls.ca, it will directly link you to the CBC website, where you can instantly vote. We're encouraging staff, employees, tourists, citizens, and I would like to make a motion that, that staff be given a budget of, say, twenty-five-hundred dollars to advertise this, to promote this. I think this is something that's going to go a long way toward promoting the city, once we win one of the National Wonders Contest round of Canada, and I would make that a motion. Moved by councillor Diodati, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion for the motion? Having seen all of them in favour, the motion's carried. Thank you councillor Peter Angelo. And if anybody wishes to hear the debate that Becky presented, the two-minute debate, you can turn to the website, www.wesleyan.com, and you'll hear the comments that Becky offered regarding our city. Thank you so much for your efforts again. Thank you. Under our second, our second deputation this evening, I will call on the members in a moment of the Niagara Rapids, Adam BB Women's Hockey Team, as I am pleased, on behalf of the members of council, to present them with plaques to congratulate them on winning the gold medal of the Ontario Women's Hockey Association Championship held in Mississauga. This was a team that wasn't expected to do what they did, with only four returning players. Coach Tim Toccholo helped to develop a team that was able to not only make it to the Ontario, all Ontario's, but also to win them. The tournament was highlighted by a rematch with the, with the London, where the girls came out on top with a two-one victory in the final. This win marks only the second provincial championship in the thirteen-year history of the Niagara Falls Girls Hockey Association. And girls, congratulations on your provincial championship. Your efforts are to be commended, along with the efforts of your coach and team staff. I would like to now invite team members, along with their coaching staff, to come forward for a presentation of council. Along with the team, I would also like to ask Chris Russell, President of the Niagara Falls Girls Hockey Association, to say a few words. So, Chris, if you'd join me up front, please.
Well, congratulations. We are an association, we're very proud of this team, and the coaching staff, and the training staff, and we're very proud of this. This team has actually won six tournaments this year, winning three of them, almost the provincial round, coming in second from two, and losing out in seventy-five to the last. As a team, we represent the city, the city in the round, and we're the foremost in the ring, as well as the South West of the girls hockey. And on behalf of the girls and their association, we have a hats off to you for doing the hard work, and the council will report back. So, we'd like to thank you for the practice, and the hard work that we're under that from Hartley Rec, and everybody on the council. We look forward to two years looking at this, and girls hockey, we need to see it come through, this is the young women's career, having changed ninety-eight years old, and those stories of the future of our sport in Niagara Falls.
Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate that, with that hats from members of council, and also to Chris for your organization for what they do for young women in hockey in Niagara Falls, and to say thank you on behalf of the members of council. At this time, if I could, I'd like to call the team members forward, the coach of the team was a manager earlier, was it Tim Toccholo? Chris?
Thanks for having us here tonight. The girls did a great job this year, and she's very proud of the falls, and just keep up the good work, sir. A few years.
The trainer, this is Chris Parker. Manager, this is Brian Goack. And now the team members, our goalie of the team was Craig O'Malley. Bridgette Newbell. Lauren Formilius. And every slug couldn't be without this evening, but we've sent out a five-er as well. And then so are your slug, Marcus, in the hole. Megan Law. Who was it, Tom? We have a girl, Angela. Sierra McCarthy. Also, Jamie Chivers is happy with us. Connor McGuire. Nicole Luchiano. Bailey Osborne. Terry Maluka. Daniel Povis. Jennifer Harper. And Colleen Adams. And Chris, again, thank you. Congratulations to all the team members, their parents, still in the process of work as well, and congratulations to the girls, keep up the good work, and we hope to see you in the finals again this year. Thank you so much. Member of the council, the next deputation is a presentation from Mr Wayne Gates of CAW Local 199, and Mr Claude Sonnier, President of Niagara Falls Labour Council, who will seek council's endorsement on the resolution regarding the impact of lost manufacturing jobs. Welcome this evening, Mr Gates. The podium is yours.
Good evening. I'd like to apologize for Claude Sonnier, he's, unfortunately, his mom is sick, so he can't come tonight. So, honestly, I'm going to talk a little bit about manufacturing matters. I'd like to congratulate the council members who participated in the forum at the Legion on Friday, May eleventh. Out of the councils, I think there's a majority of the councils were there, the mayor was there. Obviously, it's a huge, huge issue, not only for our members, but right across the country. So, I'm going to start the presentation. As you can see, the economic indicators appear to be good. Interest rates are low. Unemployment is sitting at six-point-one percent, historically low. Every month, there seems to be good news about jobs. We see that all the time in the local newspapers. Corporate profits are robust, at least in oil and gas. It seems to be struggling with this here.
I'll take over. I'll have a quick handle on it for you.
Okay, that's good. Please do for me to do that. Thank you. Go ahead, Neil. But the real story is, what's going on right across the country, and particularly in the Niagara region. Ontario lost one-hundred-seventy-one-thousand-six-hundred manufacturing jobs, fifteen percent. Niagara has lost fifteen percent of its manufacturing jobs. In nineteen, in two thousand and seven, six plant closures, and you can see them. The Dana, Canada, train plant, one-hundred-and-twenty-five, and the big news there is the Dana, Canada thoroughplant, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven. Two thousand and six, three Niagara plants closed. Again, Fortweller Drydocks and Cathans, two-hundred-and-fifty. Two thousand and five, six Niagara plants closed. You can see two-hundred-and-twenty-four, and Ferney Park, two-hundred-and-seventy-five. And you can see they go right across the Niagara area. GM Axle Plant, St. Cathans, in two thousand and four, seven-hundred-and-fifty jobs. Two thousand and three, seven Niagara plants closed. The big one there is Atlas Specialty Steel in Welland, six-hundred-and-thirty. Atlas Steel, ten-one mill, Welland again, two-hundred. GM Delphi, St. Cathans, four-hundred. Fleet Industry, Fort Erie, three-hundred-and-fifty. Two thousand and two, six Niagara plants closures. Six closures again in two thousand and one. Again, you can see ES Fox, and Ken Havens, Niagara Falls. And as you can see, as this goes through, and you look at Gallagher there, in total, three-hundred-and-ten, that was just an awful situation there, where not only those workers lose their job, they lost their pensions and some of their benefits. The Niagara region has been hit harder. Since two thousand, thirty-five plant closures, a loss of five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-two manufacturing jobs in Niagara. Some of these plants have been around since nineteen-twenty. These statistics do not take into account downside that has taken place in the manufacturing facilities. So, if you take a look at, you know, you can click, you take a look at General Motors, right now, they're at twenty-eight-hundred, but as we remember, in the early eighties, there was nine-thousand. Atlas Steel, twenty-four-hundred, they're at zero. Dana, three-thousand, they're at two-hundred. In the last four-and-a-half years, Canada's lost more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand manufacturing jobs. In two years, the job rate has actually gone faster. And yet, this is a real statistic to pay attention. More than one-hundred-and-fifty jobs are lost every single day. There'll be two people lose their job while I'm doing this presentation. This is chronic. Manufacturing share of jobs in the economy down twenty-five percent in the last ten years. We're not in a recession. In the early eighties and the early nineties, there was recession. So, you always thought the jobs would come back. We're in a period of economic growth, yet we continue to lose manufacturing jobs. And it's not actually at the one sector, one region, or one period of time. Other regions, other cities. Nova Scotia, twenty percent. Quebec, eighteen percent. Windsor, twenty-five percent, and since we did put this together, it's actually gone up. Toronto, twenty-one percent. Oshawa, twenty-one percent. Thunder Bay, twenty percent. St. Cathans Niagara has lost twenty-six percent. Toronto lost one-hundred-and-four-thousand jobs. St. Cathans, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five. The problem is widespread across manufacturing industries. Here's just some of the examples, because we always hear about you're losing manufacturing jobs, just in the auto sector. And you take a look at this list, it shows you, it's right across all sectors, aerospace, shipbuilding, food and beverages, which is important in Niagara Falls, paper, wood, automotive, it just goes on and on and on. And you take a look at the list, they just jump right out at you, the number of jobs has been lost. Manufacturing's on the critical list. As you can see, nineteen eighty-seven, we're at about sixteen-and-a-half percent. If you take a look at us today, we're around twelve percent. It's just going like this, steady decline. This shows it again. It gives you the percentage of the workforce that's left, twelve-point-five percent. Trend's gone back. Manufacturing is in a freefall. Make no mistake about it, and this graph shows it again. Unbalanced trade is a major problem. From a surplus of twelve billion to a deficit of twenty-nine billion in a decade. The deficit grew by seventy-five percent during two thousand and six, the highest on record. Trade exports have shifted to resources. In two thousand and five, it's the first time that mineral-fuel products, oil and gas, pass transportation vehicles as our top export. We're losing ground on all accounts, low-tech, resource-based manufacturing, and higher value-added. Manufacturing is Niagara's economic engine. It accounts for eighteen-point-four of the local economy. Twenty-five-thousand-six-hundred workers. Auto is critical in this area. Almost one in four are auto workers. Manufacturing is diverse. Four-thousand-nine-hundred metal workers. Three-thousand-eight-hundred food and beverage workers. Paper and many others. While also manufacturing jobs affects everyone. Manufacturing workers earn and spend close to one-point-five-billion dollars a year. Supports our regional economy, our infrastructure, our local tax base, major contributor to income tax, and we support local businesses. But it used to be more than four-thousand-four-hundred lost jobs. It's an impact of over two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-million dollars in lost wages every year. The ripple effect. A crisis affects everyone. All the spin-offs, tourism, food and retail, social programs. The social programs is like our healthcare and our education. Charities. Insecurity. Can you imagine going to work every day, wondering if you're next? Are you the next person that's going to lose your job? Is your next plant instead of close? Manufacturing matters. Manufacturing is a vital source of jobs. Two-point-one-million Canadians, or one in eight. One in six jobs in Ontario. One in seven in Niagara. And that doesn't talk about the spin-off jobs. Benefit spread far and wide. Canada's manufacturing sector directly accounts for seventeen percent of the economic activity. Purchasing of goods and services and spin-offs total fifty-five percent of the economic activity. It creates three dollars and five cents everywhere for every one dollar of activity. If manufacturing isn't the future, has the highest value-added sector, accounts for two-thirds of the national exports, and accounts for seventy-five percent of private sector R and D. These are good-paying jobs. Family support pay. Hourly pay in Ontario is twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. With overtime, that could come to fifty-thousand-nine-hundred dollars per year. Twenty-four percent higher than the average for all Ontario. Replacement jobs pay less than twenty-five percent. Opportunity for our youth. We need core industry. Engineers, trades, apprenticeships, management, as well as line workers. Support for our community. Ten manufacturing workers, direct payroll of ninety-four-billion dollars per year. Generates income tax of twenty-billion dollars. And this is what's important to our communities. Our healthcare, our publicly-funded healthcare is paid by manufacturing jobs that pay taxes. Our education system, again, paid by manufacturing, as well as the other sectors. Infrastructure. You sit around this council table, and you talk about infrastructure all the time. All those lovely roads and sewer conversations that you have around council, and how important they are. Well, how are you going to do it if you don't have any tax base to collect the money? No jobs, social services. Add to this, sales, property, and other taxes. If you care about our social programs, you have to care about manufacturing. These are some meetings that were held, Niagara information meetings, that I talked earlier in this presentation. Rick Alakis is from Welland, obviously, I'm president, CAW Local 199. Davy Robinson is from our National Union, and Timmy Lambert, who you see in the corner there, he's the president of Dana, Local six-seven-six. Now, can you imagine what he's going through? When he's lost almost his entire plant. Seven-hundred-and-fifty people are just laid off. He's got about one-hundred-and-eighty people left in that entire plant. That's what's going on, that's the real story. What we want to do, demonstrate that manufacturing sector is the key to the future of Canada. Draw attention to the impact jobs lost is having on our communities, like St. Cathans. Point out the crisis as being ignored. Call for a port and debate on manufacturing crisis. And before I get to the resolution, I'd just like to say, I don't understand, and I've said this for the last week, as we've gone from community to community, what is wrong with fighting for Canadian jobs? Canadian communities, Canadian families, Canadian children. Why are we allowing our manufacturing jobs to leave this country? And I'm going to give you an example. In shipbuilding, it doesn't matter whether you agree or disagree with the war, but the Canadian governor's made a decision to build six new frigates. And they're going to build them. And I'm saying to them, there's a bidding process out right now. And I'm saying, why are we bidding? Why is it not being done either the Fortweller Drydocks or in Halifax with Canadian shipbuilders, who in them would get off-lay off, get back to work, and be able to support their families and support their communities? What's wrong with doing that? And we shouldn't just do it in shipbuilding. We should do it in rail. We should do it with our transit. Hire Canadian workers, support Canadian communities, and at the end of the day, it will protect our healthcare and our education system. And that's what this is about. And make no mistake, manufacturing is in a crisis. And we all have an obligation to our children, and our grandchildren, and their children, and their grandchildren, to speak out about it and to fight for it. Our draft resolution. Identify the manufacturing industry as a strategic sector in Canada's economic development. Undertake a comprehensive review of the causes and consequences of manufacturing job loss. Adopt a comprehensive and integrated sector of the economy, fiscal and monetary policies, along with a framework of fair trade, that will both strengthen domestic manufacturing and protect manufacturing jobs, and ensure that all Canadian workers are protected in job loss through the approval of bankruptcy laws, wage protection, pension protection, and enhanced employment insurance benefits. And on the pension protection, can you imagine? And this is going on in community after community. Where a worker puts in thirty years or thirty-five years of their life into a plant, expecting to get their pension, expecting to get their pensions, and if they happen to pass away, pass that on to their spouse. Today, as we speak, we're losing that. Plants are closing, and they're losing their pensions and their benefits, and leaving their spouses with nothing if they happen to pass away. It's absolutely wrong in this country, and one of the richest countries in the world. And I thank you very much for the council for giving me this, the privilege and the honour to come here again, and I'll answer any questions.
We do have a few, Mr Gates, I'd like to call upon, first of all, councillor Wayne.
Okay, not questions, comments. I was lucky enough to be able to attend both the Niagara Falls and St. Cathans Manufacturing Matters forums on Friday, and I'd like to thank the organizers of both. I know Kojiko was filming the St. Cathans session, and I'm hoping that it gets played again repeatedly, and I'd encourage anybody who wasn't able to attend or hasn't seen it already, to make a part of watching it. It was an incredible afternoon. We heard from a real cross-section of the community, and Mr Iafredi from Iafredi Machine Works, and the gentleman who owns Niagara Motors were really effective. And what we heard again and again is there's a crisis, a real crisis, and it's been a silent crisis, and hopefully, it will be silent no more. What we heard was about families separated. Somebody loses a job, makes you know they're moving away to another city, another province to find it, and people, people's children are moving away in search of work. Small business owners are being, are being impacted severely by the ripple effect. Manufacturing workers lose their jobs, that affects a lot more than just immediate families. And community charities are hurting as well. United Ways Across Canada are finding that demand is, workers are thrown out of manufacturing jobs. The demand for their services is increasing, right as their base of funding shrinks, so it's a real double whammy for them. And this really comes down to in long-term sustainability of our communities, our economy, and the way of life we're accustomed to. And I think Jim Bradley really summed it up well, in his speech. He said, "We need a level playing field in our trade deals. We need the same access to one another's markets when we enter into trade deals. We need a fair trade agreement, not free trade, fair trade." And I thought that was really important. We have in Canada quality plants, efficient, quality products, efficient plants, but we can't compete with. Our bargain basement wages and environmental standards, the gentleman from Iafredi Machine Works pointed out, to get rid of his coolant, he has to call Whittington Systems and pay them to dispose of it. Brazil, China, whoever, they just dump it in the nearest river.
graph shows it again. Unbalanced trade is a major problem. From a surplus of 12 billion to a deficit of 29 billion in a decade. The debt deficit grew by 75% during 2006, the highest on record. Trade exports have shifted to resources. In 2005 was the first time that mineral fuel products, oil and gas, passed transportation vehicles as our top export. We're losing ground on all accounts, low tech, resource-based manufacturing, and higher value added. Manufacturing is the Niagara's economic engine. It accounts for 18.4 of the local economy. 25,600 workers. Auto is critical in this area. Almost one in four are auto workers. Manufacturing is diverse, 4,900 metal workers, 3,800 food and beverage workers, paper and many others. While also manufacturing jobs affects everyone. Manufacturing workers earn and spend close to $1.5 billion a year. Supports our regional economy, our infrastructure, our local tax base, major contributor to income tax, and we support local businesses. But it used to be more than 4,400 lost jobs. It's an impact of over $239 million in lost wages every year. The ripple effect. A crisis affects everyone, all the spinoffs, tourism, food and retail, social programs. The social programs is like our healthcare and our education, charities, insecurity. Can you imagine going to work every day and wondering if you're next? Are you the next person that's gonna lose your job? Is your next plant instead of closed? Manufacturing matters. Manufacturing is a vital source of jobs. 2.1 million Canadians, or one in eight, one in six jobs in Ontario, one in seven in Niagara. And that doesn't talk about the spinoff jobs. Benefit spread far and wide. Canada's manufacturing sector directly accounts for 17% of the economic activity. Purchasing of goods and services and spinoffs total 55% of the economic activity. It creates $3.05 everywhere for every $1 of activity. If manufacturing isn't the future, has the highest value-added sector, accounts for two-thirds of the national exports, and accounts for 75% of private sector R&amp;D. These are good paying jobs. Family support pay. Hourly pay in Ontario is $21.33. With overtime that could come to $50,900 per year. 24% higher than the average for all Ontario. Replacement jobs pay less than 25%. Opportunity for our youth. We need core industry, engineers, trades, apprenticeships, management, as well as line Support for our community. Canadian manufacturing workers, direct payroll of $94 billion per year. Generates income tax of $20 billion. And this is what's important to our communities. Our healthcare, our publicly funded healthcare is paid by manufacturing jobs that pay taxes. Our education system, again, paid by manufacturing as well as the other sectors. Infrastructure. You sit around this council table and you talk about infrastructure all the time, all those lovely roads and sewer conversations that you have around council and how important they are. Well, how are you gonna do it if you don't have any tax base to collect the money? No jobs, social services. Add to this sales, property, and other taxes. If you care about our social programs, you have to care about manufacturing. These are some meetings that were held, Niagara information meetings that I talked earlier in this presentation. Rick Alakis is from Welland, obviously I'm present C W Local 199. David Robinson is from our National Union, and Timmy Lambert, who you see in the corner there, he's the president of Dana, Local 676. Now, can you imagine what he's going through? When he's lost almost his entire plant. 750 people are just laid off. He's got about 180 people left in that entire plant. That's what's going on, that's a real story. What we want to do, demonstrate that manufacturing sector is the key to the future of Canada. Draw attention to the impact jobs lost is having on our communities, like St. Catherine's. Point out the crisis as being ignored. Call for a report and debate on manufacturing crisis. Before I get to the resolution, I'd just like to say, I don't understand, and I've said this for the last week as we've gone from community to community, what is wrong with fighting for Canadian jobs? Canadian communities, Canadian families, Canadian children. Why are we allowing our manufacturing jobs to leave this country? And I'll give you an example. In shipbuilding, it doesn't matter whether you agree or disagree with the war, but the Canadian government's made a decision to build six new frigates. And they're gonna build them. And I'm saying to them, there's a bidding process out right now. And I'm saying, why are we bidding? Why is it not being done either the Portwell or Drydocks or Halifax with Canadian shipbuilders? Who then would get off-lay off, get back to work, and be able to support their families and support their communities? What's wrong with doing that? And we shouldn't just do it in shipbuilding. We should do it in rail. We should do it with our transit. Hire Canadian workers, support Canadian communities, and at the end of the day, it will protect our healthcare and our education system. And that's what this is about. And make no mistake, manufacturing is in a crisis. And we all have an obligation to our children, and our grandchildren, and their children, and their grandchildren, to speak out about it and to fight for it. Our draft resolution. Identify the manufacturing industry as a strategic sector in Canada's economic development. Undertake a comprehensive review of the causes and consequences of manufacturing job loss. Adopt a comprehensive and integrated sector of the economy fiscal and monetary policies along with a framework of fair trade that will both strengthen domestic manufacturing and protect manufacturing jobs and ensure that all Canadian workers are protected in job loss to the approval of bankruptcy laws, wage protection, pension protection, and enhanced employment insurance benefits. And on the pension protection, can you imagine? And this is going on in community after community. Where a worker puts in 30 years or 35 years of their life into a plant, expecting to get their pension, expect to get their pensions, and if they happen to pass away, pass that on to their spouse. Today, as we speak, we're losing that. Plants are closing and they're losing their pensions and their benefits and leaving their spouses with nothing if they happen to pass away. It's absolutely wrong in this country, in one of the richest countries in the world. And I thank you very much for the council for giving me the privilege and the honour to come here again, and I'll answer any questions.
We do have a few, Mr. Gates, I'd like to call upon, first of all, councillor Wayne.
Okay, not questions, comments. I was lucky enough to be able to attend both the Niagara Falls and St. Catherine's Manufacturing Matters forums on Friday, and I'd like to thank the organisers about. I know Kodeko was filming the St. Catherine's session, and I'm hoping that it gets played again repeatedly, and I'd encourage anybody who wasn't able to attend or hasn't seen it already to make a part of watching it. It was an incredible afternoon. We heard from a real cross-section of the community, and Mr. Iafredi from Iafredi Machine Works and the gentleman who owns Niagara Motors were really effective. And what we heard again and again is there's a crisis, a real crisis, and it's been a silent crisis, and hopefully it will be silent no more. What we heard was about families separated. Somebody loses a job, makes you know they're moving away to another city, another province to find it, and people, people's children are moving away in search of work. Small business owners are being impacted severely by the ripple effect. Manufacturing workers lose their jobs, that affects a lot more than just the immediate families. And community charities are hurting as well. United Ways Across Canada are finding that workers are thrown out of manufacturing jobs. The demand for their services is increasing, right as their base of funding shrinks, so it's a real double whammy for them. And this really comes down to in long-term sustainability of our communities, our economy, and the way of life we're accustomed to. And I think Jim Bradley really summed it up well when in his speech, he said, "We need a level playing field in our trade deals. We need the same access to one another's markets when we enter into trade deals. We need a fair trade agreement, not free trade, fair trade." And I thought that was really important. We have in Canada quality plants, efficient, quality products, efficient plants, but we can't compete with them. Our bargain basement wages and environmental standards, the gentleman from Iafredi Machine Works pointed out, to get rid of his coolant, he has to call Whittington Systems and pay them to dispose of it. Brazil, China, whoever, they just dump it in the nearest river, and of course, that affects the whole world eventually. Fighting back can make a difference, we heard. And I know another thing that got asked again and again was, what are elected politicians doing to stem the job losses? And I sat there and thought, oh my goodness, what can I do? And then one thing that St. Catherine's council did one week ago was they unanimously endorsed your resolution, and so I will make that same motion tonight. But we also, each and every one of us, have a personal responsibility in this. One of the things I heard was, buy the car your neighbor helped to build. And we all have a personal responsibility to stop buying the cheap import. I don't know if you have the figure in front of you, Wayne, but I remember in your speech, you mentioned the incredible number of recalls of these foreign-made cars.
I get sure to tell you, one of the things that I think we all take great pride is from coast to coast to coast, okay, is the quality of work we do, our skill that we do as Canadians. It's second to none. And there's a myth out there that General Motors and the Big Three don't produce quality products. And I can tell you, in Oshawa, it has won award after award as the best quality plant in North America, second to none in the world. I can tell you, in the components plant where I come out of in St. Catherine's, and our engine plant, we're producing perfect parts. We have all the skill in the world. And what happened in 2007 around quality and the truck of the year was a Silverado, General Motors vehicle, built in Oshawa, using the St. Catherine's engine. The car of the year was a Saturn, another General Motors product. Last year, and this is what the problem is, last year Honda and Toyota sold in our market with very little commitment to our communities. And that's what it's about. You wanna sell in our market, we don't have a problem with that, but commit to our communities. Build a product right here in Canada. Last year, 2.4 million vehicles were sold in North America. What's not being reported by the media is that 2.7 million Hondas and Toyotas had recalls last year. That's what has to get out there, around the quality of our vehicles, the quality of Honda and Toyota. It's not up to the Big Three anymore. Five, six, seven years ago, maybe there were some issues around quality. Today, the Big Three are producing as good a vehicle as there are in the world, and we gotta get that message out. But more important, the Big Three is committing to communities. 85% of the parts that are put into Big Three vehicles are built right here in Canada. And a lot of it, quite frankly, is right here in Ontario because this is the hub of auto. Whether it be in St. Catherine's, Oshawa, whether it be in Windsor, Windsor's going through a tough time right now, and Chrysler got sold today, who knows what's gonna happen with that. But at the end of the day, we're building quality products because we care about our jobs, we care about our communities, we care about our families, and we care about the products that we're putting out to the public.
And that's why it's so important for everybody to buy Canadian, think about things before they purchase them. So I'm very happy to move this resolution.
Okay, councillor Wayne moves the resolution, second by councillor Anonya. Comments from councillor Diadadi?
Thank you, Your Worship. One thing I did wanna mention ironically after hearing the presentation Friday, which was excellent, very informative, was...
I can comment too, Jim.
Yeah. I was glad to be there. And ironically, on Sunday's Toronto Star, they talked about another interesting thing that I don't see specifically outlined in the draft resolution, which I think should be, is strengthening Canadian ownership rules. They've been quite lax in the last number of years, and the net loss has been huge for Canada, and they specifically mentioned a number of icons such as LeVax, Molson, the Montreal Canadiens, Vintkor locally, Hudson's Bay Company, and the list goes on and on. And they said that, it was said in the article that it was to the hundreds of billions the net loss. And I think that directly results from the loss of manufacturing jobs as well. So I just wanted to mention that I absolutely will support this as well. I would just suggest maybe you might wanna add in the Canadian ownership as well.
Just so you know, I read the same article as you did, it was in the Sunday Star, and it's an excellent article, which was very, finally, that the media's picking up on it, we're selling off our resources. For what? For no reason. I mean, they only want us, one of the reasons why we all chose to live in Canada, for people coming into our country, was because it's a great country, we've got lots of natural resources. Why are we selling them off? It makes absolutely no sense, and that may be an issue for another day, another presentation. But that's a huge, huge issue, selling off our natural resources.
Councillor Peter Angel.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. And I guess through yourself, to Wayne, I just wanted to thank you very much for coming here tonight and talking about this matter. I mean, I agree with the resolution, I will vote in support of it, and I'm sure that everyone around the council favors it. Your Worship, I wanted to say that the loss of manufacturing employment is an obvious concern, not only for us, but I'm sure for every level of government worldwide. The trend of industry downsizing and leaving our city affects us in many ways. However, as we've found out in the past, it isn't as easy as just putting up a sign and saying that, you know, we're open for business. There's many factors that affect why industry leave. From a global standpoint, Your Worship, I would say that the cost of labour is an obvious factor. Developing countries and third world countries as well, the auto industry is something that makes it affordable for them to engage in changing the location of their plants and varying the cost of transport as well as excise tax and import fees. For other industries though, Your Worship, I truly believe that it's the cost of taxes that weighs heavily on their decisions. So I guess the question would be, what has been done so far that, I mean, we might have asked, and what is yet to be done? So I've had many a conversation with Mr. Harrison and other members of our finance department about this, and about how our tax classes have been affected over the past years. Mr. Harrison recently put some figures together that show the effect on the different tax classes from 1998 to 2006, and I'd emailed them to Mr. Iafredi today. I'm hoping that he can pull them up on the screen for you. So, Your Worship, in terms of what has been done so far, the first area that I'd like to highlight is the actual tax ratio, and it's at the very top where it says the industrial tax ratio. There is no distinction anymore between industrial and large industrial, it's all amalgamated into one class. And as I'm sure that you know, the tax ratio is actually set by regional government, and then every municipality must use the ratios that are set by the region when calculating their own taxes. And you'll notice that in 1998, the large industrial tax rate was at 4.18%, and the 2007 tax ratio by the region is proposed to be 2.63%. This is good, Your Worship, but I believe that there's still a lot more work to be done before we can get very competitive. And according to the BMA report that councillor received last year, dropping the ratio to 2.63% would only allow us to actually break the, what's called the provincial threshold. And there's actual benefits of getting to the provincial threshold for the industrial sector. And perhaps I can just ask Mr. Harrison to you, to Mr. Harrison, to basically outline what some of those benefits are once our industrial classes actually reach the provincial threshold, Your Worship.
Certainly. Mr. Harrison, would you like to make comments, please?
Mr. Mayor, the provincial threshold is the level that the provincial government has put for our ratios in respect to industrial class. And that's, as you know, it's the region sets tax policy for the area, which impacts our tax rates. And the two primary benefits of going to getting down to 2.63 is that, for one thing, it eliminates the hard cap in the industrial class. As you're aware, you're capping legislation that's from the problems that affects all of the non-residential classes. And by getting to the 2.63, which the region has proposed and passed, the hard cap is eliminated. So within the industrial class, that means that if there is a tax increase that's on a particular property, that's not passed on as the hard cap to other properties in the class. The second thing that happens is that, as you can see on the second information, the education rates, the education rates are established at the provincial level, and they were established at the time that we went to CVA back in 98. And as you can see, for the industrial class, the tax rate was 4.5%. By bringing down the ratio, the tax rate has effectively come down to 2.5%, which is a large amount because there's a large portion of the industrial tax, which is education-related. So the track of getting down to that is gonna be a benefit in the future, which doesn't help the past, but it is for the future, it is. There are other tax legislation policies that the province has started, and that'll be impacted. It was recently announced in the 2007 budget, which impacts once again ratios and rates, especially as it relates to education, which will have a positive effect for the industrial class in the future.
Thank you. Thanks, Your Worship. And I guess just to finish off, I mean, while I commend regional council for having the fortitude to make shifts in tax ratios, I still believe that in order to be competitive, especially in Ontario, we need to do a lot more, we need to actually decrease the tax ratios more because we're still not at the provincial average. And personally, that's where I'd like to be. And I guess in answering our councillor Wayne's question of what has this council done, we've done a couple of things recently. I know that early in 2006, this council sent a letter to the Minister of Finance asking him for permission to decrease our tax rates for the year 2007. We subsequently denied that request, Your Worship, that's the information that I received back. We also, back in October, asked staff to bring us back a four-year tax mitigation plan. And when I talk to Mr. Harrison, that report will be forthcoming, and I'm hoping that the plan will have some options that council can further explore. But, Your Worship, not only are we affected by the loss of jobs, but as municipal councillors, we're entirely affected by the makeup of our taxes and what it does to our actual revenues. And I'd like to ask people, I guess, to look at the screen once again, because I just want people to understand the difference in assessment, and it's at the very top where it says total assessment. Okay, there we go. The industrial assessment, so the assessment of property actually went down from 1998 to 2006 to the tune of about 25 million, whereas the overall assessment, well, that Niagara Falls received was around $2.75 billion. So we increased in the assessment rate, Your Worship, but that's probably a 70% difference, and the industrial sector actually went down. If you take that down a little bit further to the roles that have a great background on it, you can see how much our taxes were affected.
Thanks, Dean.
And industrial taxes back in 1998, we used to collect just over $2 million. In 2006, we collected just over $1.2 million. So we've actually lost over $800,000 from the industrial sector. What's made up for that? Well, there's two categories really that jump out at you. Obviously, the commercial sector being made up of both commercial and tourist commercial, and also the residential sector. If you take a look at the very bottom block as well, you'll find, Your Worship, that the amount of revenue that we pull from the industrial sector now is all the way down to 2.63%, whereas it used to be close to 7, or sorry, 8%, it's down about 5%. And you can see once again that the commercial sector has picked up all of that. So, Your Worship, I do agree with what Mr. Gates is saying. I do agree that we definitely need a plan in place. I also believe that we're going to need a report back. I'd like to know the status of where our four-year tax mitigation plan is. And I'd also like staff, Your Worship, to give us an historical account on the impact of the shift that the change in taxes has had on all the classes. Because I think one thing that jumps out to me, Your Worship, is the fact that we're now collecting $10 million more from our residential sector. And I wanted Mr. Harrison actually to comment on some possible reasons for that, and I think he has some reasons, Your Worship.
Mr. Harrison, could you answer that question, please?
The primary reason, as you can see, the changes in the assessment have, the assessment mixes a big part of that, and as we talked about, is the tax rate. We've had significant growth in both commercial and in the residential properties, which has made that more valuable from an assessment standpoint, and consequently is increased to taxes-driven. When you compare, it's difficult to compare 98 to 2006 because the service levels are different, there was changes of funding from other, the upper tiers of government, and various things like that. And we've also increased our expenditure on capital infrastructure as we've done. Those are some of the broad scope factors, but certainly we can, in a report, come back with more information as to what the drivers of that has been.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Peter Angel, we do have a motion on the floor, but last you present your motion, I have to deal with that motion that's on the floor. And correctly stated, as you do, mentioned the region as a committee set up called the Property Assessment Taxation Review Committee. And we've been working on this since the last term, and ably attended by our staff, Mr. Harrison and also Annie Felicetti. With respect to the matter, we were pleased to bring the ratios down. As you correctly stated as well, the ratios are dealt with by the region. We did have Mr. Gates' representation, strong representation from GM, and they have a person who just does that type of work, and her attendance was noted at each meeting. So we were able to accomplish, as councillor Diadadi said, a reduction to 2.63, which is above the original threshold. So we're working on improving that yet, and the education component to that as well is still a substantial cost to industry. And we think about it, the taxation in industry is almost eight times their assessed value as opposed to a resident, which is 1.5 times their assessed value. So you can see how much more industry pays. And sometimes that must be reversed because what comes first, the jobs or the residents? If you don't have jobs, you don't have residents. So it's one of those things.
The next thing about Niagara, you've got lots of seniors coming this way, so let's have a problem getting some taxes out of our seniors who are retired.
As councillor...
I would like to answer his question.
Sure.
I'm gonna tell you, you can lower the taxes, you can do a lot of things, but if you're gonna have tariffs and trade agreements that don't work for Canadians, and we go to sell our vehicles, and I'll hold this up right here, talks about cars imported to Korea last year, 130,000 were sold in our market, 400 were sold in errors because of tariffs. What we're saying is, if you want the industry to stay here, you've gotta level the playing field. Taxes may be a part of it, okay, but the dollar has to be part of it. The yen is artificially low, it gives them an advantage over Canadian workers and Canadian industry. That's what you have to do. There's lots of ways that we can fix this, but the biggest issue to fix is, one, is trade agreements. We gotta fix the dollar, and certainly make that if other countries are artificially keeping their dollar low and giving a trade advantage over Canadians, they gotta fix that. The other thing is, you gotta make sure that if you're gonna sell in our market, you're paid by the same rules. And the environment's a huge issue right now. Everybody's hot with the environment, all levels of government. What happens when you watch, I don't know how many people see it on TV, but you see a show where they show China, where they're showing their industries, and you see a lot of people riding their bikes, which is good, it's healthy. But unfortunately, they got masks over their face because they can't breathe air. So if you wanna sell in our market, what I'm saying is, live by the same rules, live by the same environment standards as we have, same labour laws, same safety laws. That's how you're gonna be competitive. So you can smoke straight into taxes and it's gone down. I can tell you, 99, when we were in bargaining with General Motors, we went actually to Sydney-St. Catherine's, Mayor Ritchie was the mayor then, and they reduced their taxes by, I think it was 2.1 or something, they come up to $48,000. So taxes aren't the answer. The answer is level playing to make it fair. And I'm asking this council to be part of the solution, part of the solution, pass the resolution. I love your idea of doing a study and finding out the effects of losing manufacturing jobs in the Niagara region. What we're saying is, manufacturing matters in Canada, it's worth fighting for, and I believe, and I can say this as honest as I can standing here today, it's the biggest crisis faced in Canada in my lifetime. Because if you lose these jobs, they're never coming back. And we can't replace manufacturing jobs with no disrespect to anybody who works in the tourist sector or likes working at, you know, your local mall. There are a lot of people like those jobs, you know, their hours are flexible, whatever the reason, but they're not gonna sustain the quality of life that we enjoy, and I'm talking all of us here, that we enjoy today, with manufacturing. And if we wanna continue to make sure our children and our grandchildren have the same opportunities, we gotta level the playing field right across the country and support Canadian workers by Canadian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gates. Again, we have, are you ready to comment, councillor Peter Angel?
You know, Your Worship, I definitely don't wanna get into an argument because I think that we're on the same issue here, and we're both fighting for the same thing. But I mean, I would strongly disagree with the comment that taxes don't matter. I think that taxes do matter, Your Worship. And I mean, when a plant is looking at setting up in the Niagara region or in another region of Ontario, to find out, Your Worship, that we're well above the provincial average in terms of our tax ratio that industry pays, I think we just naturally push them away to a different region. So, Your Worship, I think it's vitally important for us to at least get down to the provincial average, which we aren't at yet. And from our standpoint, I mean, that should be one thing that we lobby the region for, and that's about all that we have control over.
My point was, wasn't that taxes, lowering taxes is maybe part of the solution, it isn't the solution.
And I think the point, though, that we're making is, we're doing our part as we can at this level of government, so we understand your...
I appreciate that.
Yes, we do have comments from additional councillors, like councillor Thompson.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. First of all, this is very alarming... First of all, this is very alarming, and we appreciate, and I know the objective is to try to make people aware, and when you see the statistical information here of the plant closures, being here for a number of years, one of my biggest fears was getting that phone call and saying, you're, we're moving out. Devastating, and you really have no control. Visiting many of the plants, they used to tell me, as long as we have an 85 cent dollar, we can maintain. Now we're at a 90 cent dollar, and I think we're even in further jeopardy than we were previously. But, looking at all this, and looking at your resolution, I still feel very inadequate about what we're doing here and what we can do. And I'm aware of the statistical information with respect to the foreign sales that take place in this country, and yet we don't have the determination to say to some of these other countries, we're not accepting your cars unless we have the right to sell in your country, and that doesn't exist. So, a lot of the, a lot of the savior of our industry is with your provincial and federal governments, and yet we feel so inadequate, and we're on the bottom line here, and yet what can we do to help the situation? We have an Economic Development Department at the region, I know they're working on the tax ratios, and have been for the last four or five years to try to reduce that, and it's all part of the game. It's not one or the other, you reduce taxes, you create the environment for industry to come here, and it's not about tourism and commerce and industry. Everybody has to walk with two legs, you've got to support and work for all of them as much as you can. I'm just wondering, with the report that Councillor Peter Angelo was asking to come back here, if we wouldn't, we shouldn't have our, the main Economic Development people in Niagara Falls, well, and St. Catharines, to get together with the region and come back with an industrial strategy that, as municipalities and the region, that we can utilize to try to support and look after preserving the manufacturing jobs. Yeah, we want to get new manufacturing jobs, that doesn't seem to be happening anywhere, but at least preserving the ones that we have, and how we can go about doing that. So, I would heartily endorse your resolutions. You can't tell me that the federal government doesn't have legislation in place that doesn't protect workers from their pensions and healthcare and whatever, that is still a problem in this country?
It's 1255, it's before, it's been passed by a third reading, it's gone to the Senate, it just hasn't been brought into law yet. And it makes absolutely no sense not to protect retirees and pensioners, protect their pensions and their benefits.
Well, that's.
It's happening right across the country.
In my opinion, in my opinion. I support the resolution, but I would ask Councillor Peter Angelo if he would also include the joining together with all the Economic Development people in the region and the regional Netco, to see if we can't come up with the best ideas, so that we as municipalities in the region can't come up with a strategy, so that we can at least do our part. You can always say the provincial government, the federal government, but we have to do our part too, that if we all pull together, and we do our part, and pressure them to do theirs, maybe that's the way to do it. Congratulations.
Thanks very much for your comments.
And Councillor Thompson, with respect to that, we did establish a strategic alliance in 2005 with those municipalities, including Frodeary, well, and St. Catharines and Niagara Falls, that have Economic Development offices. We have chosen to work together as a region to represent our area, and we have had the opportunity to meet with the President of Canada to see if there's any offshoot from the suppliers to their plant, an automotive, that we can supply in our local area in Niagara Falls. We have worked together, and we are still continuing to do so, the EDOs meet on a regular basis with Netco, and there's just been recent exercises, you know, with the oil stands, we had 25% of the delegation that went from Ontario, was represented by the Niagara region, that attended the oil stands, were able to showcase products that we provide, and it gave the opportunity to those local companies to even discover that they can do business with each other to create more industrial jobs. So, I appreciate Councillor Thompson's comments. We are doing that, we started to work together, and it's hopefully going to be beneficial that we work as an entire region, whether they come to Niagara Falls, or St. Catharines, or Frodeary, as long as we can provide industrial jobs to our residents, that's very important to us. So, we developed that philosophy to work together, so I'm pleased to report on that, but certainly we can obviously do more, and continue to do more, so we're working on that as well. So, members of council, Councillor Thompson?
I think, I think, I appreciate your comments, but I'm looking for something back to this municipality and to other municipalities, where we can follow a strategy. I know that you're working and doing certain things. In fact, I think there's, from what I heard here, a lot of discontent between some of the municipalities and the Economic Development people in the region, and I hear that on a regular basis. And I think that that's being dealt with at the region also. But I think that, I think we have to have a, something tangible and a strategy that this municipality and others can utilize to support and to do what we can to make sure that we stabilize the loss of industry, and we're in the most positive situation we can be in to try to attract new industry, and I think we can do that.
Good, thank you. Well, thank you. Members of council, I think it's time to call a vote on the matter of the resolution. You have before you a substantial resolution, your package, and we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation to adopt the resolution. I'll call the vote, all those in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gates, we appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Councillor, I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Also, Councillor Peter Angelo, would you like to make your motion?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and I mean, I have to appreciate Councillor Thompson's remarks in regards to an overall regional strategy. I think back in October, this council adopted what we called a four-year tax mitigation plan, and we decided that it would be four years, because that would be the next term of council. I think it would make more sense, especially since the region actually is the ones that control the actual tax ratios, for the region, Your Worship, to have some type of four-year tax mitigation plan. So, I mean, I guess my motion would be, Your Worship, then, for staff to report back on where I was, and to send a resolution to the regional government, asking the regional government to look at having some type of tax mitigation plan. And lastly, Your Worship, I'd still like to have an historical account on the impact that the shift in taxes has had on all tax classes. And, Your Worship, I believe that the information that we'll get back will be helpful, first when considering changes to any tax policies that the city has, and secondly, Your Worship, when we're setting our budgets, and we might want to look at something that's called a multiple-year budgeting, Your Worship, because of your percentages, you set multiple operating year budgets in place. So, thank you, Your Worship, I would make that a motion.
Second to that motion, seconded by Councillor Thompson. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion passed unanimously. If you'd call on Councillor Ainoni with regard to moving the matter forward, Councillor Ainoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I notice our President and Chair of Hydro and Margaret and our Hydro solicitors here to deal with our resolution, and seeing as it's mid-passage, I'd like to know if you can move that up to the front right now, so I make that motion.
Seconded by Councillor Thompson, any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. So, I would value your attention to resolutions with respect to the Niagara Falls Hydro. Members of council, you have before you a set of resolutions that we've asked to resolve. Is there any discussion? Comments? Yes, Councillor DiDatti. Moved by Councillor DiDatti, seconded by Councillor Ainoni. Any discussion with respect to that? Having seen none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor, motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much for your attendance this evening. We'll go back to the regular schedule of the series of events, and the next item on the agenda is the matter with regard to noise matters and the Rotary Ripfest. Councillor Wynn, I'm going to ask you to take the chair, I'm going to step down from this matter, because I'm a member of the Niagara Falls Rotary Club sunrise.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Rotary Ripfest. Mr. Robert Pickett will make a presentation to council regarding the need for noise statement. Mr. Pickett? Could you state your name and address, if you'd like to please?
Sorry?
Could you state your name and address?
My name is Robert Pickett, my address is 6960 Diane Crest.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. It's a speech I have. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your presence, for this presentation that I'm making, always such a thank the city clerk, DNI, player of Feta for itself. During the Rotary Club's Ripfest last year, held at the Optimus Club, we experienced three days of extremely loud music. Just how loud was it? A best example is the neighbour, told me that his office chair was vibrating in his basement with him sitting in it. Well, from that point, I embarked on six steps. Step number one, the second day of this event, I called our mayor, at his home, unfortunately. We chatted, he was very sympathetic, I explained that they had a permit, and that I was only complaining that I'd heard of. Later in the week, I heard that the city received complaints from as far away as two My second step, I walked over to the park and spoke with the Rotary representative. We chatted, and was very sympathetic, but he seemed powerless to tell the DJ to turn the volume down. Besides, they had a permit. My third step, on the second night, I spoke to the dispatcher of the Niagara Regional Police, we chatted, she was very sympathetic, and she told me she would call back. When she called back, she told me that there were two officers over there, and according to them, the music didn't sing too loud. Besides, they had their permit. So, my fourth step, on the third day, I decided to test my neighbours with a style petition that I composed. My petition read, "We have signed a petition to City Council of Niagara Falls to no longer permit the electronic notification of music outdoors at the Optimus Park, located at the corner of Dorchester and Morrison Street. After experiencing three days of excessively loud music from the park, we believe that this is not the location for this type of entertainment." Well, everyone was unhappy with the loud music. Although expressed the admiration and the good works of the Rotary Club, they were certain that they were responsible for this. However, I did not hesitate to sign my petition, which I have here. I think the worst situation that I met was a young couple, the lady was a nurse working the midnight shift, and was unable to sleep no matter where she slept in the house. Unlike the older couple, I found out the next day, and took her left town to escape the noise. My fifth step, I composed a letter on this pattern, and it was published by the Niagara Falls Review. I'm not sure if you got the letter or not, just was towards the end of June last year. Living next to the Optimus Park, it was okay. We all hear all kinds of sounds, such as cheering, and other incidental noises. This past weekend, we had another carnival set up, and leave this morning. There was the odd noise, and then, again, nothing to complain about. Just yesterday, in conversation with a neighbour, he commented how nice it was to have the park in our own backyard. I agree. Yesterday, Sunday, I loaded up with books at the book sale that they held at the park. Now I see that the Rotary Club has made another application to be exempted for the 90 amp curfew and amplified music outdoors, but they did not apply to have the music to be heard outside the park grounds, such as the carnival and other events. In the application, I see no improvement of what happened last year. There was no indication of how they would control the volume of the music. There would be, there would be a reorientation of the speakers, but to me, all that means that they would be heard one kilometer away instead of here. It's a mechanism that they will behave like all the other events held at the park. For this year, I will make one request to council, that a bailiff representative from the city be on site during the three days. This was my sixth step, this presentation. I would like to thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pickett. We haven't had the opportunity to see your petition, could you please tell us how many signatures are on it?
There were 32, there were two pages, but I've lost my second page, so unfortunately, I just have the wrong page.
Okay. I think everybody who was on council last year received complaints about this, and I understand that you don't want to repeat it, last year's experience. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pickett? Okay, can we have the copy of the petition submitted to the clerk? Okay, thank you very much, sir, I appreciate you coming in. We also have a presentation from Mr. John Kirkshane and Mrs. Pete Moncrief of the Rotary Club, seeking an exemption. Perhaps they can advise on how they will control the volume this year to prevent a recurrence of last year's experience.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Council. Apparently, Mr. Kirkshane hasn't read it, sorry, this is it.
If you can state your name and address.
I'm sorry, Nancy Tatuck, 7404 North Dorset Place, Niagara Falls.
Thank you.
And I am here on behalf of the Rotary Ripfest. We have changed the location of the stage, we have changed it from last year, it's back along some fence on Dorchester Road, so this is projected out into, basically into Donan Crescent, into that area. This year, we have changed the location of the stage, so it's basically up the upper Dorchester Road, the speakers will be projecting into basically Walmart, Conde Vaux parking lot. Last year, with the permit that we had, we were under the understanding that the permit that we were allowed to have music playing after 11 o'clock. Because we are concerned about being good neighbours, because it is our intent to be very involved in the community, this year, our entertainment is booked to stop at 11 o'clock. The Friday night entertainment is New York Minute, which is not a loud rock band or rap, and the Saturday night entertainment is LMT, which again, is local, and that really shouldn't cause chairs to shake. We are very sympathetic to the community and to the concerns that were voiced, and we believe that we've taken necessary steps to alleviate that issue.
Okay, are there any questions for members of council?
I just have one question from Mr. Pickett. Would you be happy with these, with these new recommendations that the Rotary Club has?
Well, as I mentioned, there's only one change, that's the speakers, I'm going to go there.
And also, the time is, the time issues, when you're finished by 11 o'clock, plus when you face in a different direction, would that make you happy?
I go back to the terminal, running the division of that, it doesn't really matter because of the amount of traffic. It's still forcing me to go, but not that much.
Well, obviously.
It's been all day, just another, it's not a time limit. It's just a moment, it's spoken to that, or the only, I say you're sympathetic, but there is this DJ in the middle, kind of band, and there's no way this guy, this guy, we have to turn it down.
Well, I think Mr. Gates could probably make a little bit.
One more remark, if two police officers go over there at the second light, to them, there's no problem, and yet people hear this, two and a half kilometers away, to them, it's okay, so, something more than just, it's not, it's something.
Well, obviously, the people from Ripfest and the Rotary Club are trying to protect this, so I think with that, and perhaps if we, do we have a bailiff officer, someone who, or is it somebody we can control this, or is?
Uh, in my eyes.
In the summer, we have a weekend bailiff enforcement officer, so we can make sure that he targets.
And he would have control to say, turn it down, or what was his sanction me about?
We'll give him a big stick. No, I mean, I would think that he would try to reason with the organizers, the affinity who are getting complaints.
This year, I would say that the person that, where I would necessarily would be specific to, would be myself or Mr. John Kirkshane, so he has a person.
Mr. Pickett, I'm sure these people are going to work with you, and I think there shouldn't be any problems. as long as the RSTF is around. Would you be satisfied with that?
I would go with the best, and like I said, the same as all the other young ones, but you're on here on that.
Okay, I have a speakers list developing. I have Counselor Ian O'Neil, Speaker Deidre Daddie, and Chair Joe Tull.
Thank you. You know, we had the same problem with, if I remember the Marietta Advisory, when they first started the battle with bands and optimists, when we moved to the speakers over there, and we tried to finish them. You know, just a suggestion, if somebody who lives at Drummond and Morrison, and for those three days could hear it, it's as if it were in my own backyard. Just turn it down a little bit. I mean, given an identity and a face that you can find, and somebody can look through in the park, I mean, turning it, trying to please the neighbors, i- is good, you know, good community, goodwill. Just turn it down, we were in the park, we couldn't talk to each other. And I love, I mean, I'm going to be there, so that's the best words. Just turn it down a little.
Turn it?
Thank you, Acting Chair. I think the same entertainers as you had before. Now, this is a brand-new lineup for this year, we have tried to put a little bit discriminatory to the present, but we agree with Counselor Ian O'Neil. Before they even begin, make it known that they are, keep it within some reasonable sum. I mean, there's no need for them to play over and above. So I think it's an arrangement you can make with this line of entertainers. And if they're not the same ones as last year, it's easy now to talk to them. So I would be supporting what she says. Turn it down.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Acting Chair. On the report, L two thousand and seven dash twenty-one, we're going to look at decibel meters. We have to get into that, John, you know, we had, this is just one problem. I get phone calls all the time, one of my biggest complaints is about noise. So we have to be able to read the level of the noise so that we can address it, because it's subjective, we can't right now determine how loud it is. This gentleman said the policeman thought it wasn't loud, the neighbors were sat around in their chair in the basement. We have to have a way to measure the sound. When we get to the next report about this, I think we're going to have to move on this quicker than, sooner than later, and that'll help solve the problem, because otherwise, we're not going to be able to solve the problem.
Thank you, thank you. Victor. Oh, okay, did I get that right?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to mention, I was there last year for the RSTF too, and it was a great event, no question, and certainly, the music was a little loud. And coming from the entertainment industry, it just seems DJs and bands always believe louder is better. And it's always the way it's been, and it's always the ongoing battle with management and musicians, that louder isn't better. And I thought it was a little loud, turning the speakers, shortening the duration, and turning the volume down a few decibels will take care of the problem, I know it will. Because the problem is, it was loud, I had a hard time carrying on a conversation. It's a real simple problem, and I'm going to support that we move the recommendation before us. I think it's a good idea. But my one concern here is, we've not mentioned here, and by the way, and I've been to the St. Athens RSTF for quite a few years, and they don't seem to have the same kind of problem. The music's tempered a little bit, it's a little more, so you can talk, carry on a conversation, and enjoy your ribs, you don't feel in a competition with any music. But this decibel reading thing, this is a report, I asked this from two solicitors ago, a few years ago, and I don't know where we're at with that, but I certainly would move the report, and I would hope that we would actually get some prices on some decibel reading. And actually, I can research it, if it's a problem, and we could add something for the next meeting. So hopefully, this summer, we're able to control this with our noise bylaws. But I certainly would, when the time is right, move the recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Deidre Daddie, seconded by Counselor Ian O'Neil, and two more speakers, Victor, are you with him?
Thank you, Madam Chair, madam. And I fully agree with the comments that were made by Counselor Karyo and Counselor Deidre Daddie. I can't understand how anyone could argue against prescribed decibel levels. I think it would be the fair way to go, we should have done it when the bylaw first came in. We didn't, we're willing to do it now. My only concern in the report is in the very last paragraph, where it says, "Should council consider to pursue a fixed level bylaw, staff that the men set an expert in acoustic engineering be retained to assist with determining the appropriate maximum sound level?" And I guess, Madam Chair, listen to yourself, Dean, there's already other cities out there that have noise bylaws that have prescribed decibel level readings in them. Why do we need to open, hire an expert to give us advice on what ours should be?
Actually, I would defer to Mr. Bevan, he wrote the report.
Okay. Well, you're the moral.
Counselor, the only city I know of that actually has a decibel bylaw is Toronto. The others that had them got rid of them because they couldn't work them. So that's one of the reasons why I think that we should research it carefully, to set our levels before we start, and also to help us ensure that we're able to properly administer it as we before. I'm, I actually tried to prosecute under one of these things once. The case was an unmitigated disaster. From the point of view of the decibel bylaw, we got the guy convicted anyway, because I had twenty neighbors who were complaining about the noise. But that's why I recommend that we study carefully and achieve levels that we know we can support within our bylaw, rather than just adopt them from another municipality. If there is indeed one besides Toronto that actually has a decibel bylaw in its own course.
Okay. Not of experience. Thanks, I have one more question, and that's in regards to enforcement. We don't have bylaw officers that really work past four thirty unless they're asked to do so. I mean, noise complaint bylaws generally come at nighttime, or in the middle of the night. Are we planning on looking at enhancing our bylaw services?
Well, once you get through the chair, in the summer, we do have a weekend bylaw enforcement officer, and his hours vary depending on need. And in fact, I remember a couple of summers back, when there were some complaints about an operation up on Mendy's Lake, or the, in the old bowling alley. Even our bylaw enforcement manager made sure that he worked on the weekend. He would go out and give you that a stolen number to some of the complainants, and he was willing to go out at midnight if he had to, to deal with the complaint. And I assume we can do similar in the summer.
Is that on this point? Okay.
And on the point of contact, when the gentleman says, you know, the DJ was asked to turn it down, and they couldn't get him to turn it down, I find that a little hard to believe. Yeah, he's hired, you're paying to unplug it, I mean, that's the bottom line. But you did say you would be available if we received any complaints, and where people don't post their cellphone numbers, maybe you could supply it to the aid of us. And if we get a call, we can just find you. We don't need to eat anything anyways, you know.
I'm sure they will be so proud of what I'm probably talking with you. Yes, definitely, I will provide my cell number, yes. Okay, thank you, and who?
Yes, thank you. I was going to get on to, I guess, some extra part, forgetting the decibels. We're in this situation because it was always the Ministry of Environment's responsibility to respond to complaints of noise, and they had decibel readers, and the expertise to do that, with cutbacks and whatever, that no longer exists, and it's shifted to the municipalities, who have not kept up with the responsibility of looking after and responding to these noise complaints. I think the key to Mr. Pickett's problem is not only the changes that are being suggested by the Rotary Club, which I think are going to assist, but getting into the noise problem directly with the decibel equipment, and training the people, having people trained on the staff, at least one who can respond, because when you go to court, it comes down to one thing, is it an acceptable level, or is it not? It's not subjective, it's, it has to be determined by exact readings, and the only way you can do that is with appropriate readings done by an experienced and trained person. So I think the key to this for Mr. Pickett's residence is the next report, which I would certainly endorse, and say we try to get the equipment and somebody trained as quickly as possible.
Okay, yes, we do have two consecutive related reports, and I know the clerk asked for clarification on the motion on the floor. Counselor Deidre Daddie, it was your motion, the clerk would just like to confirm that you're moving the recommendation that the council approve the request to the Rotary Club of Niagara Falls Sunrise to have the hours extended from nine PM to eleven PM? Is that the?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that is the motion before us right now, we've had a full discussion, all in favor of the, hey, that's carried, looks like unanimously, and I guess all true, yes.
Just as we've rather discussed the next two thousand and seven dash twenty-one in morale, and I'm not sure, I'll make a motion that we approve Sash's recommendation in the next one too, because it's related to Mr. Pickett, and by knowing that we're going to look at that hopefully for that, and maybe we'll have that by the time RSTF takes place, but I will move that recommendation also.
So the recommendation that staff investigate decibel readers, removed by Counselor Ian O'Neil, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, authority discussion.
Won't you, won't you hope to get the staff?
Yeah, by this one, yes.
Won't you get the staff, so that we can make a decision on getting this? Because I think we need this tool in our bylaw officers' hands in order to.
We will take action immediately to research this and get it together. We're hoping that we'll have them available this summer, whether or not we'll have all the standards in place, and the level we need, and we're not sure, but at least we'll have it as a tool to assist with the bylaws we have in place. We'll begin this week to do the research and see what it will take course to acquire them and get them trained.
Because I think a big part of this is, is our bylaw officer having this tool and stopping the argument about who thinks it's loud and who doesn't. Has the tool, he can say, "Look, it's this reading, and that's it, it's not somebody just guessing it, it's too loud," or one person says it's not. You need the tool to determine that, in order to get people to train things down.
If I can, that's really the heart of what this report is saying, is not necessarily that we want a bylaw, that we've identified all the standards, that might be something we go through, but we believe that if we have a decibel reading, we can go to people, and we can show them, and we have some other, if we think people are generally pretty reasonable, you know, respond to that. So we're hoping we'll have that, certainly others will see.
Thank you, any other questions?
To my motion, because I don't think it goes far enough. I'm reading the motion that, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and six, that the city pursue decibel meters as a tool in enforcing the noise bylaw on the report back to council. We're going on a year now, so I'm going to amend my motion to say, "Purchase the decibel reading tool and start on the training process of our staff."
Could I get staff comment on that?
We're happy to take directions from the council. I'm not sure what the cost is for the items, and certainly, in terms of training, we haven't got that kind of detail. We'll go immediately to acquire these items, and unless they're ridiculously expensive, we'll be back to council, as we understand your intent of the motion. And again, we may not have it all in place, so it's a bylaw and the standards, but we'll certainly have them to use them this year, if that's our point. And if that's the case, we'll have them very quickly.
Okay, is that fine with the secondary as well? Okay, any further discussion on this motion? The case, I'll pull it all in favor. Let's sit down and listen. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Ray. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda pool?
A public meeting is now being convened considering proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit the conversion of the former Loretto Academy at sixty-six eighty-one Stanley Avenue into a banquet facility slash conference center. Notice was given by First Class Mayor in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, April thirteenth, two thousand and seven, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who has noticed and has a deserting bylaw amendment or participated in any state plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the side and cheetos outside the council chamber.
At this time, we're going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment, Mr. Darverson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is, this is, shows or depicts the Loretto Academy building, and as the team has indicated, the proposal tonight is to convert personal buildings into a banquet and conference center use. This is a restoration of natural subject lands, it's directly south, as everyone knows, of a living street, living from some street. And it's a very large parcel, and again, the existing building will be, is intended to be utilized in part for this new use. The application is for metapersonal visiting building to be used as a banquet and conference and supper. The amount of floor space will be, to be utilized, current signs with a number of parking spaces that are currently available on the site. The current zoning is institutional, and the applicant has requested a tourist commercial zoning, which will permit the banquet and conference facility use specifically. This is a site plan of the property, and I note that the zoning is predicated on the amount of parking available on the site, so there will be no physical changes to the site with respect to this proposed use. The existing lands are designated for tourist commercial purposes in the official plan. This official plan permits a wide range of tourist-serving types of uses. The official plan also encourages the preservation of heritage buildings, and we believe that the proposed use controls of the official plan as banquet and conference facilities are tourist-serving uses. There will be no significant changes to the existing building or grounds. The heritage aspects of this building will be preserved, and the proposed development represents an appropriate reuse of a cultural heritage resource. In terms of provincial policy statements, the PBS states that significant built heritage resources and significant cultural heritage landscapes shall be reserved. This proposal is intended to retain existing building and landscape grounds in their current form, and therefore, the proposal complies with the provincial policy statements. In terms of zoning, the proposed zoning is for a site-specific tourist commercial use. This conforms to the official plan. The reuse of the building will be limited in floor space, and the clear parking availability will supply the use for parking. But because the, according to portion of the existing building will be utilized as a source to place restrictions on the zoning bylaw, and those would be to, in fact, restrict the use of land to a banquet or a conference center within the existing building. Restrict the facility to the floor area of building occupancy proposed, and preserve the landscape amenities of the area in accordance with this proposed development. It's our conclusion that the proposed amendment to the former Academy Building for a banquet facility and conference center can be supported, and that it complies with the official plan, is an appropriate reuse of a listed heritage building, and it complies with provincial policy statements. Our recognition, seeing the council, in fact, that that zoning bylaw amendment limiting the use to the proposed facility and include the various restrictions as I mentioned before.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darverson. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Council, hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this bylaw amendment? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, then council will now hear from the applicant or his representative. Mr. Lezda, welcome.
Council members, in our application, it was not our intent to have the rezoning site specific with the restrictions of use, and site is outlined in the planning report. It was simply to change the zoning bylaw from institutional to tourist commercial, consistent with the official plan and consistent with detailed bylaw requirements as outlined in seventy-nine two hundred, with no deviation from those accepted city standards. There's been a misunderstanding, however, due to time constraints, the owner has requested we not complicate the issue, and that the temporary rezoning as recommended and presented by planning be considered by council tonight. Until such future time, a final development plan for the site be presented, which will invariably require the site-specific rezoning amendment at that time. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lezda. Any questions of Mr. Lezda with respect to this application? Having seen none, thank you very much, Mr. Lezda. Any further questions from members of council, persons with regard to the proposed application? Yes, Counselor Deidre Daddie?
Yes, Your worship, I'm just, maybe I should have asked Mr. Lezda, or I don't know, through you, or to staff. Is there some confusion, Mr. Lezda, with what you actually wanted and what we're suggesting in the report? Or, Mr. Darverson, I don't know who I'm still.
Hey, Mr. Lezda, you just want to qualify that for Counselor Deidre Daddie, please?
It's sometimes an application.
It's sometimes in applications, like when we made the application, it was our intent to change it from institutional to tourist commercial, under the restrictions of the current zoning bylaws. What we did to show at the same time what we were doing with the site, it's almost like two things happening at once, those parts of the building and the parking, which did conform to the bylaws, the way they exist today, nothing of the issue from it, was presented. Part of the issue here was when we got the notice, we should have picked up on site-specific. On our side, we didn't pick it up. Planning went forward with their intent of what they had thought we had given them, and that was where this understanding had happened. However, it doesn't matter under the circumstances. We've talked with the owner and what requirements that they need for the interim, and the bylaw as presented would be fine.
Counsel, does that answer your question? Okay. Any further questions by members of council? Having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed bylaw amendment is now concluded. Would you, Counsel, Counsel Ray?
I'd like to move the staff recommendation as printed. I'd just like to comment, this is an excellent example of the principle of adoption reuse. It, and just a hard, a couple things to report. No significant changes are proposed to the existing building or the grounds. The heritage aspects of this property will be preserved. The proposed use is representing appropriate reuse of a cultural resource, and it, of course, requires preservation of the existing state area, which should satisfy, these things should satisfy all the stakeholders in the community whom we heard from when this was mattered last before.
Thank you. Are you seconding that, Counsel Aionni? Okay, and Counsel Peter Angelo, would you make comment?
Yeah, thanks, Your worship. Just want to make a comment myself. I mean, the change in use is being proposed to a conference center. When people go to conferences, they listen to keynote speakers, they get updated on new initiatives that are in their field. Bottom line, Your worship, is they end up getting educated. Everyone remembers what was there previously, Loretto Academy, it was a school that educated people. So, Your worship, I think that, I mean, council dealt with the heritage designation of this property. We were all hopeful that whoever purchased this property, Your worship, that they maintain the honor of its history. And I commend the developer for bringing forward an application that provides for a compatible use of building and also maintains its heritage. I'd be happy to vote for the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Peter Angelo. I conclude with the comments made as well, so I appreciate your comments. Any other comments from members of council? Having seen none, then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Lezda. Mr. Clerk, would you be kind of pleased to introduce the next item on the agenda?
The public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed boarding house at 6158 Allen Dale Avenue. Notice was given by first class mayor in accordance with the planning act on Friday, April 13, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice in the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the side and sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Once again, I'd like to request the planning director make his comments with respect to the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment, Mr. Darverson.
Thank you. This past application is on a property at 6158 Allen Dale Avenue, and the proposed use in part is a boarding and rooming house. This is a subject property, and notice that the front of the property is on Allen Dale Avenue. The property slopes down towards the rear of the property. The application is to convert a boarding and rooming house with five boarding units at a lower level of the building. The upper floor will be used for a souvenir store and sightseeing tourist business. This is a permitted use in the current TC zone. This is a site plan of the project. It shows the whole layout and the parking being proposed for the entire commercial and boarding house use. The official plan designates the subject property commercial. Residential uses are permitted as part of mixed-use developments, however, boarding and rooming accommodations require site-specific zonings. Providing the boarding and rooming house in the lower level is appropriate, as the commercial character of the building will be maintained at the street level. Separate floors will minimize the conflict between the two uses. Due to the former industrial use of the property, the official plan requires verification that there's no contamination on the site and the site is suitable for the accommodation accommodations used as being proposed. The applicant has completed a record of site condition submitted to the MOE for their approval. The MOE approval is necessary prior to the passage of the zoning bylaw. In terms of zoning, the property is zoned tourist commercial. Site-specific provisions are requested to be added to permit the boarding and rooming house, and the boarding house will consist of five sleeping units. It will contain a communal kitchen and common rooms, and is intended to be used for temporary accommodations for workers in the tourist area. Pre-existing packages may still be required, and these are indeed to be adequate, and to ensure that there's sufficient parking for a boarding and rooming house and other purpose uses on site. It's recommended that the block of the boarding house should be limited to a maximum of five sleeping units. There's two other issues that are not related to zoning of the property. The first issue is the matter of encroachment. There's an existing canopy that approaches onto Allen Dale Avenue. It's our recommendation that the encroachment be recognized through a proper encroachment agreed at prior to the passage of the zoning bylaw. Secondly, the applicant has indicated an intent to use a portion of Allen Dale Avenue for bus unloading, and this is a separate matter of the zoning, but would require a license of the city. It's our conclusion this evening that the proposed new use, boarding and rooming house, is permitted in a lower level of the building, and could be separated as the official plan constructs mixed-use developments in tourist areas, and we recommend that prior to the passage of the zoning bylaw, that a record of site condition be finalized and satisfied with the city, and with our recommendations this evening.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Darverson. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Interior Minister Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Counsel will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to proposed bylaw amendment? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, council will now hear from the applicant or his representative. Mr. Lustig, welcome.
Thank you, Your worship. Thank you, and good evening, Your worship, and members of council, staff, and ladies and gentlemen. For the record, I met last weekend with my friend, Ron Rick and partners, and I appear this evening on behalf of the owner of this property. This is a good application, and it's pleasant for me to be here to present it to you because it involves all of the attributes in a good application. I have a good client. The project is a work project. The staff report is supportive of the application. There's no one here opposing it, and the attributes of this project are good for the community, so we feel it's a good project. We agree, obviously, with the report that has been submitted by staff in all respects, including all the recommendations and all of the conditions, which are, in our view, quite, we're quite capable of dealing with and dealing with. With the help of your staff, very expeditionally. I would be remiss if I didn't say, on behalf of my client, Mr. Denning in New York, who is here, and myself, having been involved in this project, that we're really grateful for the way, for the way that the staff of the city have handled this application and matters related to this applicant as well. And I can tell you that the efforts from your business development, Mr. Philicetti and Wendy Kahnman have been exemplary, as have your planning departments, Mr. Bryce and Mr. Darverson and Mr. Castrilli and Mr. Hill, of course, through Mr. McDonald and your office as well, Your worship. So we're very pleased, and you should know that we're pleased that we've been treated well in this application. The company that is involved with us, even though the resoning is rather simple, as explained by Mr. Darverson, is an interesting company. It's a worldwide tour company. It's a Korean company under the name Dongbu Tours, and it has offices worldwide. It operates in New York, where Mr. Denning was from, and where Mr. Cho, the president of the company, is from. And it has offices in Fort Korea, which is a huge city, New Jersey, Philadelphia, Atlanta, Niagara Falls, of course, and Toronto. And as a world travel company, provides a full range of tourist services to major tourist destinations across the globe, including not only motor transport, transportation, but also air, and it has its own attractions and its own restaurants and its own facilities. So it's very much involved. Dongbu Tours has actually been providing service, transportation service to Niagara Falls with Korean visitors for some time now, but about a year or so, it started to go further than that and make an investment in the community. And their first investment was to build Ayun Garden, which is a restaurant that caters to particularly Chinese Japanese and Korean cuisine. I had the benefit of having an excellent meal at that restaurant, and it was even tasty because Mr. Denning paid for it. Of course, he told me that the cost of it might be deducted from my bill, but... The restaurant has actually been a success. It's increased business, and really, that's what this application is all about. Dongbu, visitors travel from New York to Niagara Falls, and they stay an average of two to three days in Niagara Falls. Last year, they brought in over 50,000 Korean visitors to Niagara Falls, and the tourist industry will tell you that in one year, that kind of economic growth is significant. The popularity of the new restaurant by the general public has increased to the point where their motor vehicles have to take people, other tourists and locals, to other hotels as well. And so to meet that growing demand and to look forward, the company bought the Zippa Manufacturing Facility on Allen Dale Avenue. I was involved in that acquisition. I think you'll agree that buying that building, which was derelict for some period of time and not at all compatible with what I think you want in the tourist area, is a step in the right direction. And in fact, the company is presently, as the planner has indicated, in accordance with the zoning, renovated the front of the building to allow for a misuse of gift shop and a transportation area as well. The bottom part of the property that is really the subject of this application is to be used for five dwelling units. And you have to understand that this particular type of business caters to people who need particular type of service, Korean shops and services. These people language, obviously, and it's in their interest to have these people have in first proximity to their business. And so the first phase of converting the gift shop and transportation area will hopefully be done quite soon. The city's building department is very proactive in assisting with the building current issuance. And when that is completed, it'll allow the restaurant, gift shop area, to be moved out of the restaurant, freeing the restaurant for more seats and for more business. The company expects to move double its visitors in Niagara Falls in 2007 and 2008, and has made strategic alliances with other companies and authorities to assist with the growth of tourism in Niagara Falls. As I mentioned, this is a company that provides tourists that stay an average of two to three days. They stay in hotels, they spend on attractions, meals, shopping, entertainment facilities, and the operating, we're a year round. Sneeze it. Now, the application itself, as I've mentioned, is very simple, involves the use of the bottom part of the building for dwelling, and we have no problems with the two conditions, as Mr. Darverson mentioned, the site condition record has actually already been preferred, I stress, by a local company, and the encroachment agreement, which is another requirement, is quite acceptable, and the survey for that has been also prepared by a local company, and I know the local department will be dealing with that fairly quickly as we go forward. So we anticipate no difficulties, and hopefully are able to approve this application. Now, while I want to comment, and it's more of a kind of macro comment about this small application on the one hand, but significant on the other hand, in my opinion, it is significant in the sense that Niagara Falls needs to promote tourism by having outside investment. And while we've been very fortunate here to have families and local people invest in our economy, and that's great, because they're bonded, they bind to the community, their families work in businesses, and they know the industry and the businesses very well. It's, there's not enough capital to move this tourist business forward to the extent that it needs to be moved without going offshore. You need to get capital elsewhere. And so this is a kind of business that does that for one thing. Secondly, if you don't have this sort of thing developed, you miss the opportunity to allow for other experiences, for other fronts of view, and you stagnate to a certain extent. An industry that's too red loses the opportunity to avoid being myopic about its practices, and it doesn't perhaps see what's happening in the world. And the world's a big place, and there's a lot of tourism opportunities in the world, and a lot of them are different from what exists here. And the third reason is that anyone who follows economics knows that the real true engines of growth in the world are not right now in North America. They're in Southeast Asia, they're in China, they're in Japan, and Niagara Falls needs to access tourists from those areas. Over the years, efforts have been made by forward-thinking tourist operators already in this community to prospect in that area, and there has been some success. But this has to be accelerated, because if you can imagine that in the United States right now, the growth rate, the GDP annualized is less than 2%, but it's double-digit in China and in Korea, you can imagine that it only takes a while to figure this, and a lot of people who have the means, by which to travel, they want to do an iconic location like Niagara Falls, and they prefer to spend. And so I know you know all of this, I think it's worth saying, and I share this point of view with you, because the operation that's being suggested may seem to be modest at this stage. This particular developer is a large company, and if you can convince him and others like them to invest more in Niagara Falls, we'll be far better off. So again, we very much appreciate the reception received. We're onside with the report completely. We know that the staffs will be expedited to get this to a conclusion, and if Mr. Denning or anyone has any, can answer any of your questions. If you have any questions, we'd be pleased to do so, if you would ask you to approve the application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lustig. We do have a number of members of council wish to ask some questions. I have Counsel Carrier and Counsel Aionni.
Your worship, I'm with Dongbu. I read the report, and it did mention Dongbu in the report, but now Mr. Lezda, it is a Dongbu company. They are a micro, Your worship.
Sure, so another, thank you. And Counsel Aionni?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Just as you and you want to close the public meeting, I'd be happy to make the motion for the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Counsel Maves? Okay, well, we get that right. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Lustig, for your comments with regard to cooperation from our staff. We appreciate that. We also like to thank, if I may, the applicant with regard to their commitment, as you pointed out, over 100,000 room nights are anticipated this year from Korea, and we appreciate the growth in that business. So we understand what you're saying, the economic impact that does have, and it's nice to see that they're, they're growing. So if there's any other further questions from Mr. Lustig, I'm going to close the meeting with regard to the proposing of the zoning bylaw amendment. At this point, it entertained a motion from Counsel, Counsel Aionni, and Counsel Maves. Any further discussion with respect to this matter? Having seen none, all those in favor? But please raise your hand, all those in favor. I oppose. Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much, Mr. Lustig. And thank you very much, Mr. Denning. We appreciate your attendance here this evening. Thank you. And members of council, I'd like to just have your attention, please. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Regional Counsel Barbara Greenwood in the audience here this evening. Welcome, Counsel Greenwood. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Mary Phillips, the grandmother of John and Gay Elia. John Elia is one of our city staff at the arena, and our condolences to John, Gayle, and their family. There were some significant events in our community this past week, and I'd like to bring to your attention, if I may, last Thursday, we had an emergency preparedness event on May 10th. Fire Chief Lee Smith, along with the staff from the... Fire Chief Lee Smith, along with the staff from the region, are to be commended on the organization of an extremely educational program that provided emergency and community services to representatives from the Niagara region and across the border in the United States. He helped prepare agencies and emergency procedures, specifically for incidents that could happen at the border or affect residents in both Canada and the U.S. They facilitated partnerships and offered critical information regarding the emergency preparedness, and congratulations to Chief Smith on hosting that worthwhile event. Also, the Women of Distinction YWCA event held on May tenth. I'd like to make mention of two Niagara Falls residents who were honored at the Women of Distinction Evening hosted by the YWCA. Sonia Baloo of Stanford Collegiate and Katie Dunham of St. Paul High School are both recipients in the young women category, who were recognized as having made significant contributions to their community. It was a pleasure to honor their achievements on Thursday. Also, this past weekend, the citywide teen art competition held on May twelfth. I was pleased to attend the fourth annual citywide teen art competition to acknowledge young Niagara Falls artists who had their works displayed and judged by professionals. The Peterson Community Workshop does a great deal of recognizing young talent and providing an opportunity for the youth to display their works. I'd like to thank all those involved with organizing that effort and the staff who made it a very successful event. Also, on Saturday, May twelfth, the annual Niagara Regional Police tug-of-war took place. I was pleased to attend this event that highlights the partnership between police on both sides of the border. And though it's unfortunate that I must mention that for the second year in a row, our police corps has had to admit to defeat to the American team. Better luck next year, and I know the team members really want that trophy back where it belongs for so many years here at our headquarters. I'd like to also offer my congratulations on the special inclusion this year of the unveiling of the new Niagara Regional Tartan. On the upcoming events, Meals on Wheels volunteer appreciation will be held on May fifteenth, and I'm pleased to be attending the Meals on Wheels volunteer appreciation evening tomorrow night to acknowledge more than two-hundred-and-fifty good people at Meals on Wheels who volunteer their time for this worthwhile service to the community. This is the thirty-eighth year of service to the city of Niagara Falls. Also, I welcome the American delegates on the Forty and Eight pilgrimage, who will be making the pilgrimage to the cenotaph at the base of Clifton Hill on Saturday for the seventieth anniversary of the Forty and Eight. This event marks the contributions of Canadians in world wars and conflicts, and the American veterans come here to memorialize fallen Canadian soldiers. That service will be held on Saturday at one-thirty in the afternoon at the cenotaph on Clifton Hill. Also, we're very proud of Ron Alex Run fundraiser on May nineteenth. Our Deputy Director of Planning wishes to acknowledge that Alex Hilovich, who will be running in the Great Wall of China marathon this Saturday, donations to support the Ron Alex Run fundraiser at the Niagara Falls Public Library exceeded four thousand dollars. And children, and I also pledged to match the footsteps of Alex, who will have to run with the members of, numbers of pages read. Also, donations to support the children's summer reading program. And of course, I have one further announcement. The Rainbow Country Pilgrims have asked that the Viennial Culture, in conjunction with Drummond Hill Presbyterian Church, will be held at sixty-one thirty-six Lundys Lane on Friday, May twenty-fifth, from ten to eight p.m., and on Saturday, May twenty-sixth, from ten a.m. to five p.m. Admission is five dollars, and lunch will be available both days, along with the beef on a bun on Friday evening. The show does feature displays of traditional as well as non-traditional, not your grandmother's type of quilts, but quilts and merchandise, merchandise mall, and a boutique showcasing quilted items for sale. And communication, the comments of the city clerk is the next item on the agenda. We have a request for May fourteenth, okay, two thousand and seven, it's National VON Week. Do you want to deal with them together?
Yes.
Okay, and also the second, as the Order of Sons of Italy and Canada requests for use of pyrotechnic fireworks to slay at the Club Italia twenty-fifth annual picnic on Sat, or sorry, on Sunday, July eighth, two thousand and seven. Moved by Counsel Carrier, seconded by Counsel Ayano. Thank you. Any discussion with respect to that? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration this evening?
No.
Okay, but we have dealt with resolutions earlier, as you saw, and we do have some legal matters to report. The CAO reports, actually, with regard to permanently closing the laneway between Broughton Avenue and Martin Avenue and Leader Lane and Ferguson Street, file number two zero zero seven dash two seven seven. And also, we have a release of the park agreement, part one, on Plan Fifty-nine R, one-two-nine-six-five at sixty-eight forty-six Frederica Street, file number two zero zero seven dash one-one. Moved both by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diadati. Any discussion to those? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's approved, thank you. Ratification of community services for the action. I'm going to call Counsel Ayano as the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fellow members are to be ratified from tonight's meeting at Community Services Committee the minutes of April thirtieth, two thousand and seven, be approved as amended. Reports that no parking restriction be installed on the east side of Pinoc Drive without London Report MW two thousand and seven dash forty. B, that the Lazareth request, that the request for free charter service from Niagara Transit for the order of the Saint Lazareth of Jerusalem be approved. C, that the sign variance be approved, provided that the north side signs are not illuminated. New business, A, that staff prepare a report regarding parking fines for commercial vehicles. B, that staff prepare a report on tractor trailers parking on Pinoc Drive. C, that staff prepare a report on the Park Store store on the court of Lundys Lane and Corwin Avenue in response to the concerns of the residents. D, that a report be prepared on a policy for providing free transit. E, that staff prepare a report on requiring low-fuss toilet for retrofits. And F, that staff meet with the representatives of Slow Pitch National and Optimist Club. And I still move that.
Moved by Counsel Ayano, seconded by Counsel Diadati. Any discussion to those matters? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. What's your clerk? Ratification of in-camera actions?
Two items, your worship. One, you just passed the permanent closure of the laneway between Broughton Avenue and Martin Avenue and Leader Lane and Ferguson Street at the in-camera session. You dealt with the surplus, declaring that surplus, so the recommendation from in-camera was that the laneway located between Martin Avenue and Broughton Avenue to the east and west and Leader Lane and Ferguson Street to the north and south, you declared surplus to the city's needs and conveyed to the abiding landowners for nominal consideration. And second item related to the pause and pause matter, that staff advise the Ontario Municipal Board that the zoning bylaw under PLB quashed as the applicant no longer wishes to pursue the rezoning.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Mays. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Your clerk?
On April thirtieth, the Adult Entertainment Appeals Committee met to consider an appeal of the refusal of an adult entertainer's license. The committee requires for ratification of the council, that the appeal be denied.
Okay. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Ayano. Any discussion? Counsel Thompson.
Yes, through you, can we touch, do we have any further specifics on this? I'm unaware of it.
We can provide you with that information. I can pass it around to you if you wish. I mean, basically, I can give you the gist of it, which was the information here. The applicant had appealed. The committee listened to the evidence and based on the serious nature of the criminal convictions of the applicant, the recentness of said conviction, the fact that the commission of the crimes for which the applicant was convicted occurred as an adult entertainment establishment, and also the failure to appear by the applicant at the appeal area. But in the future, I'll make sure we provide you with information.
Just through you, one further question. What is the topic here? Am I, am I, am I at a conflict with someone?
It was, I'm not sure which the, it was for the license, for the individual, it wasn't for, for, for the individual, as a, as a personal occasion.
Yes, Counsel Ayano.
Just on that point, let me say that, you know, I don't think that information should be bandied around to people. I, I think it's far more, any written information, I mean, we leave them all the information in the committee room, but we read, it's got name, it's got, yeah, we don't need to see any of that. I mean, if you want that, perhaps, to the clerk's office, but I don't think anything in writing should be submitted to acceptable. We kind of leave it in there when we leave. We don't, you know, we deal with the facts, we listen to the police officer, we listen to the, but I don't want any personal information, and there's a lot on that.
The comments with respect to that, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, just in respect to that, I mean, you know, like I think Counsel Thompson has a point. He's asking us to ratify a decision that we've never seen any information on, so, you know, to ask what the, you know, what the decision is about is not unwarranted.
And Mr. Clerk, you answered the appeal, but just to discuss the appropriate...
No, I'm sure that's right, we usually have in the past, and we've had so few of these that, you know, our process, I have to look back three years back and try to see what we did before. The fact is, under our adult entertainment bylaw, council's authority is delegated to the committee. The committee is formed from three council members. They hear the evidence, and then they make, they technically have to make a recommendation back to council, but in the future, I'll make sure that you have that information so you know the particulars.
Counsel Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I, I think under the circumstances, maybe we could, in the future, have this brought to our attention in committee, if there are sensitive personnel comments, or at least give us enough information where we can make a decision, because I could find myself in a conflict situation.
That's it, Mr. Clerk?
I mean, it is sort of a fine line we have to walk, because in essence, it's a hearing similar to a criminal hearing in court, which has to be open to the public, but we will try to provide you some information with at least trying to maintain some privacy of the individual in question.
Counsel Mays?
Being a member of that committee, we get to read the situation. It's handled almost like a mini-court. Once we read everything, once the decisions are all done, everything we have is turned back in according to the Privacy Act, so really, it's a, it's a very, very confidential type of business, so it's really difficult to sharing the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I don't know, Mr. Clerk, if you'd like to make any further comment, but you can see it here, this comments, I've gone as a counsel here, so you've obviously qualified that. Next time around, would it be appropriate to have this matter brought up in camera?
No.
No? Okay. How would you propose to satisfy the party, as well, some of the members?
As I already said, we will provide some information on the particulars of what the recommendation of the committee was.
Okay, can we leave it at that, at this point? It's not frequent, but I know we'd like to strike transparency with the, you have to respect the, with the privacy of some matters here. Okay. Members of council, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, the adoption of the report of the committee, all those in favor? Motion's carried, naturally, thank you very much. We will move on to the consent agenda. Members of council, anything you wish to lift from the consent agenda, we should deal in the hall. Counsel Carrier, move forward the consent agenda, seconded by Counsel Mays. Any discussion on the matters? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws to the bylaws to begin with first reading? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Mays. Counsel, should the motion, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws two thousand and seven dash nine, and two thousand and seven dash one oh five are first heard.
And the motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Counsel Carrier, seconded by Counsel Mays. You heard the motion, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor?
Bylaws two thousand and seven dash nine, and two thousand and seven dash one oh five are a second and third time asked.
Thank you. Members of council, are there any items for new business? Counsel Thompson?
Thank you. I tried to make this brief, when I was asked to bring this up this evening. Several years ago, we had the opportunity to deal with the federal government in attempts to acquire the Niagara Falls Armory. There have been many studies and a lot of interest with respect to that, a lot of debate on how that should be handled. There's no question that there's been some concern with respect to the amount of money that would take to put this back into a viable use. Mr. McDonald made a suggestion in a report with respect to the dollars requested by the veterans group who are interested in having this as a military museum. Forty thousand dollars was suggested be cut out of the budget. And strangely enough, the group that follow me and I met with on a couple of occasions understand that, and I certainly understand that and support that. However, they are an extremely enthusiastic group. They have a lot of expertise, a lot of disability, and a lot of volunteer time on their hands. And they're concerned about the armory being basically mothballed. They would like to, first of all, meet with and have a member of senior staff, whether it's Mr. Masari or whoever, to meet with. I think initially, they would need Mr. McDonald and others there to establish a liaison and a rapport, so that they can go in and start cleaning, painting, and trying to fix the armory up to a suitable state where it can move forward. Mr. Beck himself is, has the equipment and the ability to make the shelves, and the volunteers to assist him with that, and the cabinets that were suggested. They would like to have a long-term lease negotiated, and they would, rather than being directly involved with the museum board, have the ability to deal with staff and to move forward, to try to have something positively done and move forward to getting their military memorabilia and getting this open as a museum. They have applied for, and I'm not going to be specific, grants, which could be seventy-five thousand dollars a year for the next five years, which would certainly give them the ability to get up and running and be viable. And they would just like the opportunity to meet with staff and to move on with this as quickly as possible. They indicated that none of them are getting any younger, and they have a lot of enthusiasm to make this happen. And I'm wondering if I could make a motion that, that you meet with them and see if we could expedite this, particularly if they get this grant. I think that this is really a doable situation. I don't think anybody would argue about the armory being partly one of the most important historic buildings in our community because of its historic nature with the First World, Second World War, and the role that is played to the military in this community. And to think, at one time, there was a suggestion by the government that this would be put on the auction block, to be put up for a commercial use or something else, that would certainly be a disaster and a slap in the face to those who have lived their life and their lives in the past, counsel. So I would hope the council would let this enthusiastic group, at least three, and see if they could move on doing something meaningful about building.
Thank you, Counsel Thompson. Counsel Ray?
Yes, I can certainly support the meeting with Mr. Holden.
We have a second to this motion.
Sure. I just wanted to comment, though, that the proposal for circumventing the Board of Museums is contrary to what was adopted by the previous council after great years of hard effort it was spent by Counsel Carrier and Diadati and myself and members of staff. We had a number of meetings, working meetings and public meetings over a period of several months, and after a lot of deliberations, that was decided that that was the best model we could come up with, so I'm not in favor of that suggestion. But, you know, what else would be really nice to see is some of this enthusiasm that the volunteers have, if they could go into fundraising toward establishing museums. We actually did have a military museum in the armory, don't forget. It operated for several years. It was the Lincoln and Rowan Presidential Museum, developed and operated entirely at no cost to the taxpayers. So, you know, it is doable, it'd be nice to see some of that enthusiasm and energy go into, into that. It was done previously, and, you know, I was one of the founders of the Niagara Military Museum back in nineteen ninety-eight, I think it was, and, you know, I'm not sure to date if they actually raised any money, and I'd rather let the season get going on that as well.
Okay. So Counsel Thompson, we have a mover, a second or a motion. You heard the comment and explanation with regard to government from the museum matter. Would you like to address that?
Well, I think that that could come back in a report, and that's something that can be discussed. I just want to see something getting on and moving, and see if there's some way we can get these people in there and keep them busy and do something constructive for the city.
Okay, good. Any other comments from members of council? Carrier, will call the bylaws in favor? Motion's carried. Any other new business this evening? Yes, Counsel Diadati. Just real quickly, your worship, just a reminder, go to niagarafalls.co, tomorrow morning, and vote for Niagara Falls and tell your friends. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Motion adjourned. Counsel Peter Angelo, Counsel Carrier, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.